This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the Zoning Board, and this is the January 12th, 2021 zoning board meeting. After board members are introduced, they will stay present to indicate that they are at the meeting. Zoning board meetings will be done this way until more typical meetings will be held at City Hall once it is deemed safe. The City of Nashua's zoning board of adjustment is continuing via video conferencing using the Zoom application. Due to COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order and pursuant to the governor's executive order, boards are authorized to meet electronically until further notice. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically until further notice. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to inform that we are allowing public audio access to the meeting be available by telephone, 978-990-5298, with additional access means by video or other electronic access. The meetings can be streamed through the city's website.
Want to go eat? I'll be here very soon.
HTTPS colon slash slash WWW.NASHUANH.gov/318/CTV on Nashua's Community Link and also on Channel 16 on Comcast. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided via Zoom. Links to each meeting will be contained in the agenda for each meeting. Real-time public comment can be addressed via video to the board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. Real-time public comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments via email to the Planning Department email, planningdepartment@NASHUANH.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. This information must be received by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department post office box 2019-NASHUANH03061. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the board will appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if you are unable to use Zoom. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations must be submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. The chair is in control of the meeting. The board will continue as reasonable as possible to follow the procedures as identified in the bylaws. The applicant will present their case followed by questions by the board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the board utilizes a light timer. This will not be available, but the board will utilize a timer and will adhere to the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and then five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition. The zoning board, the Planning Department, and city staff thank you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Carter, can you please call the roll?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Mary Ellen McKay.
Present, and my two-year-old Shih Tzu Bentley is in the room with me.
Okay, so noted. Steve Lionel.
Present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
J.P. Boucher.
And present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Jack Courier.
Jack Courier is present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Rob Shaw.
I'm present, and no one is in the room with me.
Jamie Minkara.
Present, no one's in the room with me.
Nick Kanakis.
I'm present, and no one's in the room with me.
And if Stathia Borus, I don't see her yet. We do have a... Would you like me to make the announcement of the two cases that will not be on tonight?
Certainly, we could have changes to the agenda, and then I'll speak to alternate and regular members, their positions, and then acknowledge yourself and Kate, oh, there she is, and Matt Sullivan.
Okay. I'm Carter Falk with Planning Staff. We also have Kate Corrier and Matt Sullivan from Planning Staff. And two cases will not be on tonight. The first one is at 49 Buck Meadow Road. It was actually postponed to the January 26th, 2021 meeting. It will not be on this evening. There's also a case that was at 6 Cody Avenue, and the applicant has withdrawn that case and will not be on tonight. So we have cases two, three, and four from the agenda.
Okay, and the membership on the zoning board is we have five regular members, and they are Steve Lionel, the vice chair, Jack Courier, the clerk, Rob Shaw, J.P. Boucher, and myself. And we have Nick Kanakis and Jamie Minkara as our alternates. If somebody, if one of the regular members cannot vote, there's a conflict, one of the alternates would step in and vote in their stead. But we have five members tonight, and unless a member lets us know they cannot take part in any case, then they will vote. However, both alternates take part in all discussion and may question any and all applicants. So they are part of the public hearing and the public meeting. And I will now read case number one into the record. One Chestnut Realty LLC owner Mark Conserva, Metro Sign and Honing applicant, 1 Chestnut Street Sheet 80 Lot 1, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-101, Cable 101-7 (C) for maximum number of ground signs. One permitted, one existing, one additional ground sign requested. It's in the GIMU zone in Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present the case? Is...
Can you hear me?
Now we can, Mark. You were muted.
Very good. Thank you very much.
If you would please state your name and address for the record, the floor will be yours.
Mark Conserva from Metro Sign and Honing in Tucksbury 178 Lorm Street. Here as designated representative for the Landing at One Chestnut, and we are the applicant. We are the sign contractor. I'm also joined here tonight with, by Tom Dunn. He's available for any questions. He'll answer anything technical. He's a principal at Metro Sign and Honing and point man for this project. I'd like to start by just reading into the public record the narrative from the application. Is that okay?
Absolutely fine, and Kate has helped you in put something up on the screen as well.
Thank you. "The Landing at One Chestnut Street occupies an unusual piece of property in shape, size, and use. The rectangular parcel stretches approximately 1,600 feet from Chestnut Street to Pine Street. The parcel has frontages and entrances on both streets. The entrances are approximately a third of a mile by street from one to the other. The property is occupied by a single structure. The Chestnut Street entrance services a multi-story brick warehouse storage facility. This entrance had a new freestanding main ID sign installed in the summer of 2020 to replace the previously existing dilapidated ID sign. The Pine Street entrance services a single-story wood frame section of the building, which is occupied by several commercial and industrial business tenants. A service right-of-way on the north side of the parcel is utilized by tenants for deliveries and shipping. It's not suitable nor used for through traffic. Presently, the Pine Street entrance has no ID sign. The building is set back approximately 100 yards from Pine Street. Within the setback is a landscape buffer zone, a chain link fence, and a parking lot to service the customers, vendors, and employees of the commercial tenants. Plans to rehabilitate and improve this entire space recently received administrative approval from the Nashua Planning Board. Plans and drawings for a new freestanding main ID sign at the property's Pine Street entrance were included in the proposal. Presently, locating the Pine Street entrance into the Landing at One Chestnut is extremely confusing and difficult for customers and vendors. A hazard exists as cars, trucks, costly slow stop are totally passed by the site. I entered the retail electrical fixture store adjacent to the entrance, mentioned plan for a sign identifying the entrance to One Chestnut. The comment was that the employees and customers are routinely interrupted by truck drivers and others looking for the entrance to the business center at One Chestnut. The sign would eliminate that problem. Relief is sought from Article 10 Signs, Subsection 190-101, and more specifically, Ground Signs Table 101-7C of the City of Nashua's zoning bylaws. This bylaw restricts the number of ground signs in the general industrial mixed-use zone to one. One Chestnut Street is in this GIMU zoning district. I'll describe the sign now first.
That's okay, Mark. Just keep in mind, please, that you have 15 minutes and there is a clock ticking.
How far along am I? I thought this might take...
You're at 11 minutes and 33 seconds and counting.
Okay. "The sign is a double-sided freestanding pylon sign with energy-efficient external solar light fixtures attached. The sign consists of an eight-inch-deep and 72-inch circular cabinet containing identify and copy. The cabinet is mounted to an inch-square aluminum post with aluminum stanchions. Below the sign cabinet is a 12-inch-by-64-inch panel with leasing information. Per sign will be painted black with white acrylic lettering mounted to the sign faces. The dimensions of the circular sign face is 72 inches in diameter. Total square footage is 36 square feet. The entire structure measures 9.5 feet in height and 7.4 feet in width." I would like to adjust the salient points for the application. "The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Presently, the Pine Street entrance into the Landing at One Chestnut commercial complex is without signage. Customers, vendors, as well as shipping-receiving vehicles have no way to safely and efficiently locate the entrance to the principal parking lot for the complex. Confused and distracted drivers are the result, creating a hazardous situation for other drivers and pedestrians attempting to navigate the area. Proper signage will significantly diminish the potential for accidents and injury. The public rights and interests of the use and enjoyment of the streets in the vicinity will be affected in only a very positive way. Number two, the spirit of the bylaw is observed. The Landing at One Chestnut is located in the GIMU zoning district. The City of Nashua zoning bylaws, Article 10 Signs, Subsection 190-101, restrict the number of ground signs per lot to one. An implicit and explicit intention of the ordinance, along with the welfare and safety of the general public, is to protect the city's landscape and its citizens from redundant clutter and distracting signage. A new freestanding sign was permitted installed in the complex's Chestnut Street entrance in 2020. This entrance is approximately one-third mile by street from Pine Street entrance and parking lot. You cannot see from one to the other by roadway or across the parcel. Clutter, redundant, and distracting signage is not an issue. There will be no increase in vehicle traffic through the neighborhood since the Pine Street entrance has always been through the existing entrance. The only change will be the proposed main ID sign. The rights and safety to the citizens will in no way be adversely affected by the addition of the sign. Number three, substantial justice will be done. As mentioned, the only access in and out of Pine Street parking lot and the commercial industrial space it serves is the existing entrance. The sign which services the Chestnut Street under the complex has no influence or effect on the Pine Street entrance. Each entrance services a distinct and different use. Relief from the zoning bylaw restricting the property to one freestanding sign, given the location and uses of the entrances and exits into this legally-zoned commercial industrial enterprise significantly impairs the full use and enjoyment of the property by the owner, yet has no negative impact on the rights, safety, and well-being on the city and its citizens or intentions of the particular bylaw. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. This section of downtown Nashua is experiencing long-anticipated renaissance. The ownership of The Landing at One Chestnut is investing heavily in the exterior of the property in anticipation of this renaissance. Improvements include a significant revitalization of the Pine Street entrance. A section of the property includes refurbishment of parking lot, rehabilitation, elimination of some chain link fence and landscaping, in addition of a freestanding directory sign at the intersection of Pine Street in the entrance leading to the main parking lot. The project was introduced to the Planning Board at its August 2020 meeting, received the board's informal administrative approval. The impact of the improvements, including the proposed sign to the economic and property value, should be strongly positive. The ownership of One Chestnut Street through this investment are indeed betting on it. Number five, little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The Landing at One Chestnut Street Business Center is a building which measures 160 feet in width by 560 feet in length. The parcel areas it sits on is 4.5 acres. The exception to the large building currently has one freestanding sign at the entry at the Chestnut Street under the property. The sign measures 36 square feet and mimics the sign being proposed today. The hardship for this property is there is no clear identification sign for a primary access point to the site from Pine Street. Without a clear sign identifying the entrance to the site, it's extremely difficult to see that this is the turn, the access point for the business center. The building on the property sits 100 yards back from Pine Street, and the entrance way off Pine Street is not likely associated with the One Chestnut Street building. There is some wall signage on the building while prone, illegible, or not noticeable when looking directly at it and not visible to the drivers focused on the road. Even if recognized, it is not clear that it could be accessed from Pine Street. When driving southwest on Pine Street with the property to the left, the building is completely obscured by the 100 Factory Street 10 Pine Street building, which is very close to the roadway. It's not possible to know that the turn is an entry point for One Chestnut to motorists who are unfamiliar to the area. When driving northeast on Pine Street with the property to the right, it appears the roadway to One Chestnut is a turn for the parking lot for 100 Factory Street 10 Pine Street. It would be reasonable to think it serves as close by businesses such as Just Lights and Johnson Electric Supply and not for the Landing. A driver would likely pass by without knowing they can access the entrance to the business center from this roadway. We seek relief from zoning, which allows one sign by requesting a second freestanding sign. We ask that the ZBA consider the size of the building and the distance from its secondary access point to a primary entrance to the building. We propose a modest 36-foot externally illuminated, double-sided entry sign identifying the Landing at One Chestnut to motorists traveling in both directions on Pine Street. In conclusion, due to the special existing conditions, a variance is needed to enable the property owner's use of the property. This relief cannot be achieved by any other reasonably feasible method available to the applicant. Thank you for being patient with me.
Oh, no, thank you. You still have five minutes just about left, Mark. Do you have anybody else who wanted to say anything?
I'm not particularly. We would like to hear from the board. I know one of the principals of The Landing is here, Alexandra Freeman. I don't know if she would like to speak.
Well, I think we missed it.
Okay, first, I'm...
Second one going right now.
I hear somebody speaking, but I don't know if it's for this. I'm going to reach out to the board to see if anyone has any questions. Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Courier, sir?
Yeah, a question I have is I was curious, how long has it been called The Landing? Was this the original name, or is this more of a recent change? I just, I thought it was called maybe One Chestnut Street or something. And I was just wondering if one of the folks in the application could refresh my memory of that.
I am not capable of answering that question. Perhaps Tom Dunn from my office or Alexandra could answer that question for you.
Hi, Mark. This is Alex Freeman, one of the owners at The Landing at One Chestnut. We purchased this...
Alexandra, excuse me, could you please state clearly your name and address for the record? I apologize for interrupting.
That's okay, not a problem. Alexandra Freeman and 17 Barrett Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Yep, so I was just going to confirm that we purchased this building April of 2019 from the previous owner, Michael Tickner. So that's when the name transferred over to The Landing at One Chestnut.
Okay, thank you. I guess that was the only question I had. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Does any other member of the board have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone here, excuse me, who would like to speak in favor of this application? Kate?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak with questions, comments, concerns, opposition to this application?
Madam Chair, I see no hands and no messages in chat.
Thank you. Then this time I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Kanakis.
I think I'm in favor of the variance. It makes sense to me. This is a fairly long property with entrances on either side, long ways. It can seem being easy to miss that second entrance, and I think putting the second sign up would make it easier for people unfamiliar with the area to get in the first time and not do that lap around a couple of those one-way streets down that area. It's a fairly reasonable-looking sign, matches the one on the other side. So I think it's far away enough where there's no redundancy there. So I'm in support of the variance.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I agree with Mr. Kanakis. I support the application, given the size of the property, the distance between the two, well, the fact that it's a double frontage lot, and the distance between the two. And just to say anecdotally, I have driven by and walked by this property countless times, and I had no idea that there was an entrance from Pine Street. So I think it's in the public interest that that be clearly marked.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support of the application. I pretty much concur with what my colleagues just said. I don't think I have anything else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm also in support of the application. I think the written application stands on its own merit. It meets all the points of laws we need to be. And also, interestingly enough, I, this portion or this Pine Street side of the property, to me, it looks kind of forlorn and forgotten without a sign because it just looks kind of abandoned, you know? So I think the sign will make the area look more, I'm not sure, inhabited. And so, and I think it's appropriate. I'd also like to say that the sign, you know, that's on the other side. Of course, the proposal tonight is there'll be an equivalent sign on this side. I think it's kind of a nice industrial look about it, where it's not just a kind of a standard internally-lit sign, but to me, it looks a bit industrial, steelish, and it's kind of appropriate yet tasteful. So I'm all good with it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor of the application, again, for the same reasons that my fellow board members have spoken to.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionel.
Okay. I'm also in support of the application for all the reasons that my colleagues have stated.
Thank you, and myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I'm also in support of the application. I go by there quite often. What's confusing sometimes is you'll pass an entrance, and then you kind of bring yourself up short because you're not sure if it's the entrance to Chestnut, the Plus Company entrance right there, that building that's right after it. So it makes it a little confusing. So yes, I am in support. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for One Chestnut Realty LLC owner Mark Conserva, Metro Sign and Honing applicant, 1 Chestnut Street Sheet 80 Lot 1, requesting variance land use code Section 190-101, Table 101-7 (C) for a maximum number of ground signs. One permitted, one existing, one additional ground sign requested. It's in the GIMU zone. It's in Ward 4. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, simply stated, we recognize that it is a very large piece of property, has two frontages, one on Chestnut and one on Pine Street. Again, over 1,600 feet in width. And again, we find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spare and intent of the ordinance. We find that will not adversely affect property values strongly parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
And thank you, Mr. Shaw. I saw your hand up first for a second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor, and I just have typed in here the voting members are, in this case, the five full-time members. I don't know, maybe you'd mentioned that a bit earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that was out. So that's who will be voting here, and I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Courier, and yes, indeed, I did mention it at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how did you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you, and Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. Mark, that is, congratulations. The application has been approved, and as we let people know, any decision made by this board may be appealed. There is a 30-day window for that appeal. Should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Corrier within the Planning Department. And thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the board members, and I'd also like to thank Carter Falk for his assistance in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, case number two. Pinnacle Amherst LLC owner Eric Crosswell applicant, 472 Amherst Street Sheet H Lot 136, requesting use variance from land use code Section 190-15, Cable 15-1, Number 156, to use a portion of an existing building for a winery retail business. This is in the HB zone in Ward 2. Is there somebody here to present this application?
Yes, I'm here, Eric.
Okay. Hi, Eric. If you would do me a favor, please, and state your name and address for the record, and then you will have 15 minutes with which to present your case.
Yeah, so this is Eric Crosswell, and we're at 472 Amherst Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. 0306... 03063, actually.
Okay, Eric.
Okay, so we are moving our business from Daniel Webster Highway up to this location, and we've been in business for 25 years. You know, I was actually, as I reviewed some of the questions even with this variance, I was so surprised that this was really even an issue to begin with. So I'd be surprised if, and I hope there's not any issues with us moving up there. There's a lot of like-minded businesses near our business. So for us to actually be able to contribute another retail business to this industrial park, which has been getting more retail traffic in there, I think it'll do nothing but increase interest for businesses in that location, but also will be able to feed off the other businesses that are located on Amherst Street. So I don't feel that it conflicts with anything or any businesses nearby. I don't feel, you know, that, or I should say, I feel that it observes the spirits and within the ordinance and for all the businesses around it. I don't think, there's nothing... for all the businesses around it. I don't think, there's nothing like us. We are a very unique business, where what we do is we help people make their own batches of wine. We, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Incredibrew, but we started back in August of 95, so very simply, relocating from Daniel Webster up to this location. We love the location. It's absolutely perfect for us, and I hope that you guys would approve this. But I really don't have much more. You know, marks are really tough act to follow.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Crosswell? Seeing none, I'm going to ask, is anybody here to speak in favor of this application?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
I see none, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Then seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Mancara, sir?
So I do support the application. I think that, I am familiar with the operation. So first of all, I think there's quite a mix of uses in the area. We have seen multiple variances in this particular building or in this particular property, but also just, just the basis of my knowledge of the business. I don't, I think it is kind of a hybrid between a manufacturing type of use and a retail type of use, because people are actually coming there and producing a product. So I do think it's compatible with the area, and I'd support the application.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shaw?
I'm also in support of the application. I agree with what Mr. Mancara just noted, and yeah, I think it fits. I think, I don't see any concerns about it, and it seems like an appropriate use.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, sir?
I'm in support of the application for the reasons that my board, other board members have stated. Also, in, you know, when you look at the zoning map, going out Amherst Street, you know, this, there's like a little spit of highway business that goes back right really around this building, and not sure why that is, but you know, this would be permissible in the PIMU zone, which is surrounding it. Maybe that's why it looks like everything else around it, and you know, I think it would fit right in. But again, for all the reasons in the written application, I think it meets the point of law, and I'm good with it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application. I don't think I have to say any much more than my colleagues have said already. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionell?
I'm also in support of the application. As noted, there have been many use variances granted for this, this location. I'm familiar with the business, although I've never been a customer of theirs, and I think it's a great fit for the location, and agreed also that the zoning map is a little weird in that look, in that spot.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis?
I'm also in support of the application, and I don't think I have anything else to add.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I am also in support of the application, and it does fit really well within that location. Is there somebody who would like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for Pinnacle Amherst LLC owner, Eric Crosswell applicant, at 472 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 136, requesting use variance from land use code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 156, to use a portion of the existing building for a winery slash retail business. It's in the HB zone, Ward 2. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, this has been a site that has had several use variances. Again, saying this because we find that it does fit in with what is going on in the area, and it fits well with, within that area, the business does. Find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. We find that it is within the spare and intent of the ordinance. We find that will not adversely affect property values of selling parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the use variance.
And thank you, Mr. Lionell. I saw your hand as a second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionell, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionell votes in favor.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That is a five to zero vote. That's unanimous, Mr. Crosswell, and so congratulations on obtaining the variance. As noted, anyone may file an appeal to any decision this board makes. Should that happen, or if you have any comments, questions, concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. Thank you for your application, and again, congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks for everyone who's, who's really helped, you know, through this process. I appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
We'll see you down there, Steve. You will be a customer, Steve.
Yeah, you'll get them. It's a friendly board here. Thanks, Eric. I will read case number three into the record. Deborah and Sean Lang, owners, 34 Robin Hood Road, Sheet C, Lot 1297, requesting a variance from land use code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback on Pollard Road to construct and attach 26 by 26-foot two-story addition. It's in the R9 zone in Ward 8. Is there somebody present who would like to present this application?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir. If you would just state your name and address for the record, and then you will have 15 minutes with which to present your case.
Okay, great. My name's Sean Lang. I'm here with my wife, Deborah, and our builder and contractor and friend, Steve Russo, is here with us as well. And we're at 34 Robin Hood Road in Nashua, 03062.
Thank you. The floor is now yours.
Okay, so we're looking to build on to our, our home, because my 81-year-old mother, who recently just had a stroke, and was living by herself, we feel that she can't not live by herself anymore, and we didn't want to put her into assisted living. So we're looking to put on a bedroom and a sitting room area with a laundry room for her, and then we'd have like a living room above that. So that's why we're requesting to go out the three feet for the variance.
Okay. Does any, have you finished your presentation, sir?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. There's not much more I can add to it. That's, that's why we're, we are building on is for my mother, which is something we were planning on doing, but not at this point, but with her failing health, we felt that we needed to go forward with it. And we, we didn't realize that we needed to apply for variance, but that's what we're here for. So, yeah, so thank you for having us.
Oh, no, thank you. It's pretty straightforward. Does any member of the board have any questions? Mr. Mancara, I saw your hand first, and then Mr. Courier?
So just a question for the applicant. When you realized that the proposed addition was going to go into the required setback, did you look at any alternatives to perhaps reduce the size of the footprint?
We did, but since we invested some money into having the plans drawn up, which cost us, you know, a pretty good amount of money, this was our first plan that we wanted to go with, and since it was only three feet, we didn't really think that we had to come up with an alternative plan as of yet.
Maybe Steve should talk about it.
Yeah. Good evening, board. I'm Steve Russo, Russo Enterprises. If, with your approval of this variance, I'd be building.
Can I have your address, Mr. Russo? I apologize, but
That's okay.
we're filming, and they need to hear where your address is.
Sure. My residence is at 14-16 Hill Street, Nashua.
Thank you.
03064.
You may continue, sir. I apologize.
Okay, no worries. As far as, we did discuss briefly shortening the addition by three feet, but where there's a decent-sized set of stairs that takes his mother from the downstairs area to the upstairs living room area, that would encroach substantially into her living space, because we're actually putting in a handicap stair lift to go up the stairs. So by grabbing that three feet out of the 26-foot area, like I say, would just make it really small down there for her. It doesn't sound like three feet small, but in this particular situation, it does encroach quite a bit. And where they have frontage on two streets, that's what kind of threw a curve in the works, so to speak. We thought there was a 15-yard setback, but where it's considered a front yard, that's where we are now asking for that three feet, because the city has 20-foot setbacks, and we thought it was only 15. So everything was kind of based around that 15-foot setback, not 20-foot. So basically, to answer your question, if we take three feet from her living area, it would make it really tight and not really all that comfortable for her space. So I hope that helps answer the question. Yes, thank you.
Mancara, did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, yes, it did. Thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
Mr. Courier, sir?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand, like, on the proposed plans, there's like, it shows a, like, one face of the proposed addition, like, has a chimney, and is that chimney, would that be facing Robin Hood or Pollard, or like toward?
Pollard. It would be facing Pollard, sir, yes. And it's not going to be all stone, like it's on the plan. It would, just wasn't cost-effective, so it'll be sided. It's for a zero clearance fireplace in the living room upstairs. So that'll be the bump out for that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the other question is, you know, I appreciate the flags in the lawn. I didn't know if you did that for our sake, or whether you were staking it out for your own, but it allowed, you know, board members like me, you know, who do site walks, to get a better visual of what's being proposed.
Right, yeah, we definitely try to help you out.
And, but I was, I was, I guess I'd rather hear your, the applicant's thought as to whether there would or wouldn't be any issue with cars going around the corner to kind of see around the house. It was hard for me to make a judgment on that, so I'd just rather hear it from, from the applicant or you.
We've been here 25 years, and up to this point, the side road of Pollard is a very quiet road anyway, and has a stop sign at the end. As far as it being a blind spot for people driving, I don't think so whatsoever. There's still plenty of room.
All right, thank you. That was the only questions I had.
And you saw our lawn, so I apologize for how messy it looks right now with those flags and all the dirt. We had a sprinkler system in there that we had to relocate.
Does any other member of the board have any questions for the applicant or for Mr. Russo? Seeing none, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in favor of this application, and I do have two emails, but I generally ask for people who are present first. Yes, Karen, if you would please state your name and address for the record?
Karen Green, and I'm on 3 Pollard Road, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm the next-door neighbor, and I think it's going to be beautiful.
Thank you. And Karen, did you send an email, because I have an email here from a Karen Green?
Yeah.
So if that is you, then it is okay to accept your word, and we will not have to read this into the record.
It's fine.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? If not, I'm going to read this correspondence into the record. Please use this email in support of the requested variance listed in case number 4, 34 Robin Hood Road, Deborah and Sean Lang, that is being heard on January 12, 2021, at 6:30 PM. We are directly across Robin Hood Road from the Langs' property, and we have no problem with and fully support the variance. Please contact us at kevinmoore7@yahoo.com or 603-880-6750 with any questions. Thank you, Christine and Kevin Moore. Is there anyone here to speak with opposition, comments, concerns, or questions around this application?
I see none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support of the application. I think, you know, this is, kind of seems to be the recurring thing that we do see with corner lots. Certainly, this is the appropriate spot to put the addition on the, on the house. I, you know, I had the similar concern as my colleagues exploring just, you know, the impact or ramifications of what would be the case if the encouragement wasn't to be allowed, and what that might mean for the addition. And I also noticed, I think likewise, when I, I kind of looked at the floor plan, it looked like that not only, I think, as was explained in the testimony, but also looks like perhaps the bedroom might have gotten significantly impacted as well, just even further, I think, impacting kind of the usability of the space as at least intended. So I do think, obviously, there's support from the neighbors, and I think this will be a well-done plan, and I don't think it'll have any issues, and I do support it.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Courier?
I appreciate the applicant speaking about that, that extra three feet, which Mr. Mancara first brought up, because I was concerned about that, but it does seem to make a pretty large negative impact to the design. I also appreciate the butters, especially the one there on Pollard, because in my mind, if, if somebody perceived this to be a negative impact, you know, that would be the most impacted property. So I really appreciate hearing that they don't feel their property would be impacted, and that gives me comfort, you know, in throwing my support into this application, because, you know, hearing that, you know, I think it, it meets the points of law, so I'm good with it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application, like my fellow board members, you know, same thing. We've seen these double frontage lots before. And again, I think the most impacted person that would be impacted by this for any reason, whether it's a view or whatever, is in full support of the application. Having lived in Woodford for 10 years, the next street over, I used to walk a lot in this area, and I do agree that there is really no hazards there with that addition there coming up to the stop sign. So again, for all those reasons, as still unstated, I fully support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionell?
I don't have anything really to add to what my colleagues have said, and I am in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis?
I also agree with what's been said so far, and I support the application.
Thank you. And Mr. Mancara?
I also support the application for all the reasons that have been stated.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also support the application for all the reasons that have been stated. Is there someone who would like to make a motion on this application? Mr. Lionell, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make I'd make a motion on behalf of Deborah and Sean Lang, address thirty-four Robin Hood Road, Sheet C, Lot twelve ninety-seven, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen three, to encroach three feet into the twenty-foot required front yard setback on Pollard Road to construct and attach twenty-six foot by twenty-six foot. This is in the R nine zone, Ward nine. The board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. It's a corner lot and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board examined whether reducing the size of the encroachment was feasible and was determined that it was not because if it's a corner lot, there's two front yard setbacks that pose restrictions and the board believes that this is reasonable. The board believes it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We believe it will not adversely affect the property values, the surrounding parcels. We have testimony from two of the neighbors who are in favor of the proposal. We believe it is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Thank you. And Mr. Shaw, thank you, sir, for your second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Lang. Your variance has been granted.
Thank you so much.
As we state with every case, anyone may appeal any decision this board makes. Should you have any comments, questions, or concerns, please re-refer to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier in the Planning Department and people have thirty days to make that appeal. But right now, congratulations, your variance has been granted and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, having no more cases tonight, we'll just move on with the business of the board. We have minutes from December eighth. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the minutes and are there any edits, comments, adjustments to be made?
I saw nothing to change.
And is that pretty much the consensus of everyone then? Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Is there a second? Oh, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, I also vote in favor. Minutes are of December eighth are accepted. We don't have any agenda for next week, is that correct? Two weeks from now. I don't have an agenda in my packet. I could be missing it.
No, we were not sent an agenda, but it looks like Kate's putting one up on the screen.
We just wrote it up yesterday, so.
Okay.
First case is the holdover from for forty-nine Buck Meadow and there's a few new ones.
Oh, isn't that case number three interesting? Huh? Well, it's just around the corner from me.
Yep.
Is, does anyone see any regional impact? Let's see, I will just go through. Mr. Lionel?
I see no regional impact.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Courier?
I see no regional impact.
Mr. Shaw?
I see none.
And Mr. Mancara, Mr. Knakis, do either of you see anything that you might alert any of the rest of us to that we didn't see?
I do not.
I do not.
Thank you both very much and I do not either. And so I have us all on record. Now we'll move into the copy of the bylaws and the fact that there will be elections in two weeks. And is there any conversation, discussion? In the board's hands at this point.
I don't believe anything's changed in the last year here.
I reviewed them and I didn't see anything to pardon changes at this point.
I as well don't see any needed changes at this time. It's all good to me.
Okay, fine. Do we need to vote on that, Mr. Falk, that we as a board see no changes?
I don't think so. I think if there were any changes, they'd be brought up at two successive meetings, but since there's no changes, I mean, I'll just put a note in the minutes that the board has looked at the minutes. Board has looked at the bylaws and determined that all the articles within it are up to date and I mean, maybe it, at a minimum, we can just change the date on it because I think the last date change was two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Perhaps you can get a clean copy and just update it after we have the new slate of officers for twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Good idea.
That's fine. Then you so noted in the minutes for the next meeting. I think the only thing left now is to discuss elections and who is choosing to run for which position or who would like to run for a position. Mr. Lionel?
Well, I've been Vice Chair for two years and I would like to run for the chair position for this next year.
Okay, and would you like to have, I mean, the floor is yours at this point usually, or unless we check and see if there's any other people who want to run for the position and then have each person make a statement? Or you can make your statement now and then we'll look at positions of clerk and vice chair?
I don't really have a statement to make. I, you, you all know me and I've been on the board for for several years now. And Ellen, I think that I think I can, I can do the job and give it, you know, give it a go.
Thank you very much. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I would also like to run for the chair again. Generally, as past precedent has been set, the chair has been given at least two one-year terms and I would like us to continue, continue with that precedent. We've been in some pretty tenuous times with COVID. I think we've managed well. We've not had all the meetings this year that we could have had due to COVID and I would like to continue on with your support in this position. And so thank you for listening. Is anyone interested now in the Vice Chair position, the Clerk's position? Mr. Courier, sir?
Well, I'd just like to throw out that I'm delighted that there's interest in the members to run for officers. That's great. And, and, and I'm glad there's two folks throwing their names in the hat. If there was no interest, say, in, in, in a clerk position, I, I mean, I'd be happy to do that, you know, if, if there's not other folks interested in that and I'd just leave it at that. I mean, but if there's other people interested in that, that's great. And, and I'd support that, but I, you know, I'm happy to serve if that spot is needed.
Thank you. Is there somebody else? Yes, Mr. Falk?
Madam Chair, I guess the board all knows that only the, only the actual members can have an office, so unfortunately Jay and Nick wouldn't be able to run for one, at least not at this time. Maybe when there's an opening for a full member, they would, I'm sure they'd be jumping at the bit to be an officer.
We'll just reel them right in.
Carter, where in the bylaws?
They're loved for this board and they're loved for this process. I'm sure that would be the case, but so anyway, so just the members can vote for a slate.
Where does it say that in the bylaws? I hadn't spotted that.
It's only the voting members, Mr. Lionel.
Well, it says by majority vote of the members of the zoning board, yeah.
It said members and alternates. It might be different story.
Yeah, okay. That's the interpretation. That's fine. I was just curious.
That's why we've historically done it for, ever since I've been on the board.
Okay.
Okay, is there somebody else interested in clerk or do we accept Jack's nomination? Is somebody interested in Vice Chair? Mr. Shaw?
Can I just speak? I'd, I'd welcome Mr. Courier to continue to be clerk. And.
Wouldn't we all?
I think that with your and Mr. Lionel's interest in, in Chair, if the other that doesn't get elevated to Chair or main Chair would be willing to, to serve as Vice Chair, then I'd be fine with that. But if Mr. Boucher is interested in serving again in a position, you know, want to make sure he can make that be known. I've, I've served in all the roles myself previously. I don't have any special need or interest to serve in any one of them at the moment.
Mr. Boucher, sir?
Again, I'd be more than happy. I'm not, I'm not interested at this time to fill a role unless there was a need for it. I have no problems in filling in anywhere. And like Mr. Shaw, I've, I've fulfilled or have done all three roles, familiar with that. So I'm more than happy to have Mr. Courier again to fulfill the role as a clerk. I appreciate that, Mr. Courier, because I know how daunting that can be, Mr. Courier. And as far as the, the both Mr. Lionel and yourself, you know, for the, for the, for the chairman, you know, again, I know this is a vote, I don't want to be in a position of, not that I don't want to be in a position, I just don't want anybody to have any hard feelings about that. And I, I kind of would hope, I wish that maybe it would be easier, obviously, for me, both of you work out. You know, so basically, it's really only the Vice Chair and Chair position, I think, that are open to both of you. So I don't know if either one of you have any more thoughts on the alternative motives, whether or not you would be happy staying or, you know, switching roles. Maybe if I heard a little more about that, because I think, again, it would help, I think, the rest of us. That's my opinion.
You know, I, you know, I've been the Vice Chair for two years. You know, if there isn't another, you know, or not other board members who are looking for that position, I don't think it's unreasonable for whoever is not the Chair and is running, you know, Mary Ellen or myself, that, that they take the Vice Chair position. I don't know how Mary Ellen feels about that, but it would be fine with me.
That would be fine with me. I've been the Chair for a year. I've been the clerk for many and I would be fine with whatever, however, the board determines in their vote.
Okay, well, then, then we've got our slate then. Or it can, well, that's interesting because we vote on, I suppose we can do that, right? We can, we can say that, you know, we have two people running for Chair and whoever doesn't get Chair gets Vice Chair. It's not really the way it's written in the bylaws, but I don't think there's a problem with that.
We don't have to, we could do each, yeah, we can do each, each position in its own election, so we could vote on.
Okay, I see.
And then, then vote on Vice Chair and then.
Yep, that works.
We should make a motion for each, for each position, like someone should make a motion for clerk, Vice Chair, and the Chair.
And so we would do that in two weeks when we vote, correct?
I believe it's got to be at, at two meetings.
Yeah, I would suggest we take the vote tonight and then take a vote again.
Confirm it the next meeting. I think that's how, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, then I guess I'm gonna, do I open this up for a motion?
Actually, can, hang on one second. So, Mr. Falk, I think we might be confusing the, the bylaws with the, the officers. I think the officers is this single vote.
The single vote, you're right. I apologize. As I'm reading it now, it just says it shall be elected in January, so it doesn't say for two successive meetings. There's other things that may be two successive meetings, but I think the officers can just be a motion and a vote. I apologize.
Does that happen tonight or in two weeks? I'm, now I'm totally confused.
I think it's up to the board. We can do it. We could do it tonight or two weeks from now.
It says in January and there's all the members here tonight. I don't know if it'll be all the members here at the next meeting.
Right. Historically, that's more of a challenge in past years where sometimes we went to February or March before we could have all five or maybe all four full-time members or things like that available, so.
Right.
Probably a little less likely at the moment to have that issue, but who knows if somebody won't be able to make it for some reason two weeks from now.
Okay. Then I guess we're at the place where we make a motion or a nomination?
Somebody should.
Yes, Mr. Boucher, thank you for putting your hand up.
I'll take these one. I'm gonna make a motion to nominate Mr. Courier as the clerk.
Second.
Second, thank you. Okay.
You should ask if there's any other nominations.
True. Are there any other nominations from the floor for the position of clerk? Seeing none. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
I vote in favor. Mr. Lionel votes in favor of Mr. Courier.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Boucher's in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Oh, my wife won't be happy, but I'll vote in favor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor, so that's five. It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Clerk.
We're gonna send your wife something nice.
Well, we'll autograph a copy of a future set of minutes. How's that?
She could still go to my sisters in Cape May and swim anytime she wants, Jack. She knows, Diane. Okay. Do we have another nomination? Yes, this is.
Chair, correct?
Jack, Mr. Courier, did I see your hand? Mr. Shaw, did I hear your voice?
Yes and yes, I think so. Go ahead, Mr. Courier. You raised your hand.
Well, I, I, I mean, just to, to kick it off, I, I would, I would say, I guess I'll make a nomination for Ms. McKay as Chair and I, I guess I make that nomination. and I guess I make that nomination, first of all, with no disrespect to Mr. Lionel, but with an observation, like a COVID observation, and that is, the attendance of these meetings has been great by the Board since COVID came along. Typically, the Vice Chair sees a lot more action. You know, I think historically, the Vice Chair was probably Chair at a very large percentage of the meetings, maybe 25% over the years. And also, kind of, I don't want to get too sidetracked here, but there's been, I've never seen such, like, little voting, you might say, on behalf of the alternate members, because in the past, almost, you know, frequently, we could hardly make a quorum of three, you know, and Mr. Minkara and Mr. Canakis have excellent, you know, attendance, and they hardly get a chance to vote, because we've all had good attendance. That's one upside to COVID, and I just wanted to throw that out. And I also say, I, you know, I mean, I make a motion for Ms. McKay with no disrespect for Mr. Lionel. I also think it's great that the Board has a female Chair, because in my long tenure on the Board, that's rarely the case, and, you know, diversity is always a good thing. But that's just a couple of soft comments by me, and and so I throw out a humble nomination, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to go ahead and nominate Mr. Lionel for the position of Chair. I guess that one of the things that I also kind of wanted to offer up as well is that I think it's been a long practice of the Board as well to try to give opportunity to all of the full-time members a chance to rise to Chair of the Board, and a willingness of whoever the current Chair is to look to those members that might not have had a chance to have served before, so I would just like to note that, and I think it would be reasonable for Mr. Lionel to step in to Chair, but I think you both would be, you know, equally good Chairs. I think you both, you know, would serve well in that role. And, you know, perhaps regardless of who would be Chair this coming year, perhaps the other one will want to be Chair again the following year, so I think we, all the rest of us have served as Chair before, and I think it's good when the Board has that exposure throughout the membership as well. So that would be, I think, one reason to consider Mr. Lionel for this upcoming term, and then see where we're at next year, so.
Thank you. And do I have a second on either or both nominations? Mr. Boucher?
Sorry. Mr. Shaw, do you need to say something?
No, you could probably just, just go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna second Mr. Shaw's nomination for Mr. Lionel, and I just want to speak to that for a minute.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. McKay, again, no disrespect to you. I think you've done a great job. I can only speak for myself. I weirdly enjoyed being the Chair when I was the Chair, but I also know that when, you know, it's time to, when other people are interested, I had no problem stepping aside, and I remember the second year that I was nominated. I think because of Mr. Shaw's traveling and some other issues with other Board members, I think that I continued to fulfill that role, but I was completely accepting and knowing that that it was going to be for one year, and I was okay with that. So I know that there's some, that people have spent multiple years in, and again, thank those people for that. I'm also agreeing with Mr. Shaw that anytime we can give somebody an opportunity to do that, and I think that Mr. Courier and Mr. Shaw have been on the Board for a long time, and I think they've seen people come full circle several times, probably, so again, again, no disrespect to you. I think that you've done a great job during this period. I don't know how you've done it sitting at your desk here, because I was telling somebody today that these meetings, I I prefer them to be in person. I felt it was, maybe it would have been easier for me in person if I was in your position, so I really appreciate what you've done this year, so, this past year, so again, I'm going to second Mr. Shaw's vote for Mr. Lionel.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to second Mr. Courier's nomination, so that would be
Thank you. And now, okay, I guess.
So while we're, okay, never mind. Sorry, I'm in a different spot in the process.
Okay. Now we will have to vote, and we will vote matter who we vote for first.
I think you could just ask each member who they're voting for.
Oh, maybe that's easier. Do very much. Yep, it would be easier that way. All right, Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Well, I guess I'd be voting for Ms. McKay for Chair, and I guess that would be Mr. Lionel for Vice Chair, per our discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'd be voting for Mr. Lionel as the Chair, which I guess would automatically say that I would be nominating you or voting for you for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'm going to vote for Mr. Lionel, but again, I guess I would note, I think we should still just take a separate vote after the vote for Chair.
Okay. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
I vote for myself for Chair.
Thank you. And Mary Ellen McKay, I would vote for self for Chair, to keep it, you know, I guess even. Lionel, in three, two, you will be Chair. Congratulations. And now, do we take a motion on the Vice Chair? Mr. Courier, sir?
Well, I make a motion for Mary Ellen McKay for Vice Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
No, it's actually Mr. Lionel.
Oh, I was, that's okay. That's okay.
Okay.
Whoever.
All right, now I will go back down. Jack, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of Ms. McKay for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I vote in favor for Ms. McKay for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Vote in favor of Ms. McKay for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I vote in favor of Mrs. McKay for Vice Chair.
Thank you. And myself, I also, so we now look at Mr. Lionel as Chair, myself as Vice Chair, and Mr. Courier as Clerk. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now have a new Board.
Congrats.
Is there anything else we need to go over?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I, oh, God, I have two seconds. Okay. Jack and Rob, right at the same time, we have two motions. Okay.
Mr. Boucher, do you vote to adjourn, or do you want to stay?
Was that for me?
Yes, sir.
I vote to adjourn.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Courier?
I vote in favor of the adjournment.
Thank you. I vote in favor of the adjournment. Mr. McCarron, Mr. Canakis, would you like to stay in the room, or do you concur with our motion to adjourn?
I concur.
I'll also vote to
Thank you very much. Okay, then. I guess we're done, and I'll see you all in two weeks.